I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Teresa, take your roll call, please.
Okay, Mayor Jonah. Mayor Jonah?
Jonas?
Jonas?
Come on.
Sorry.
Do I have to sing? Yes, I'm here.
All right. Keel?
Here.
O'Hara?
Here.
Wasslerger?
Here.
Matson?
Here.
And I have not heard from Brackman.
Okay, it might be late. Do we have a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the 5:30 2022 meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from 5:22.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? If not, all in favor say aye. All right, opposed? Bells are in your pocket. Do we have a motion for to approve the bells as submitted?
All move.
Second.
Any discussion? I went through. I didn't see anything that... Questions on? There's no discussion. We'll vote. Wasslerger?
Yes.
Matson?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
I gotta remember not to say it, or I'm gonna have... I'm used to saying it. I'm used to saying it. All right, public comments. Anybody got any public comments?
Yes.
Go ahead. Give us your name, Vlad, so they know.
All right. My name is Vlad Scouts. I'm a resident of Hartford. First of all, congratulations on the new people sitting here, and sorry to see you go from Ward 3.
Well, I'm still living there.
Yeah.
They haven't kicked me out yet.
Yeah, well, keep trying.
There you go.
So, we're back to discuss the chicken proposal, the backyard hobby chicken proposal. As we've done a lot more research since the last time we've been here. And we've been looking at impact on some of the surrounding communities as to what this has actually caused to them. And some of the... And we've actually spoken to other Hartford residents since then as to what their concerns are. One of the biggest ones is enforcement. So, we've got other Hartford residents that they like the idea, but they are afraid that it won't get enforced the right way. So, I've had the city enforcer come to my property and tell me to move my pallet off, you know, the sidewalk and everything. So, I believe that he's a good guy and he knows what he's doing. It doesn't look like any other communities in our area have enforcement issues. So, we are actually the only community in the area that doesn't bottle chickens. So, there's where the law says T does, two balls and rain. And at that time, they've not had the kind of issues that a lot of people are worried about with loose animals running everywhere, people abusing their animals, not being able to take care of them. And as we spoke last time, we do have contact with people that are willing to take chickens off people's property if they're unable to take care of them. Our proposal for how the enforcement's gonna be paid for is no other town around us requires an application fee or a license fee up to six chickens. We think that if people are serious in Hartford, they should $25 and that much to pay to be serious about something. So, that will go into enforcement fees, and any fees accumulated while it's being enforced, we'll also go back to paying for that. And other than those issues, I'd like to kind of open the floor with the amount of research and study we've done so far. If there's any other outstanding concerns that you may have as to why Hartford's the only community that shouldn't have chickens.
This is an ordinance change for us, so we're gonna have to... We would have to redraft an ordinance. As we've talked, and I think maybe Teresa can pass this on to you. If we're gonna get this on the agenda, I need to have one or two... Is it one council member can bring it to me and we can get it on the agenda. And I know you were talking, gonna talk to Cindy, and I'll let that conversation happen and see if we wanna get it on. I have a question, Vlad, as to how it relates to our developments that have covenants against them.
So, in order to do that, there are other cities that have already looked into this. You have to have approval from the covenant, basically a signed, validated letter from the covenant that says yes, you are allowed to, otherwise you're not allowed to do that.
Okay.
So, the Hartford law would not supersede the covenant law.
Okay. So, our ordinance would not... Just because we changed the ordinance, people that live, say in... I'll use our example, Kelly Point, could not automatically put chickens in unless Jardines, who is the developer...
Right. Yeah, absolutely.
...puts out letters to the city, correct?
Absolutely. And another thing we could propose is if a lot of neighbors really don't like this idea, you can actually get an orderized letter from your neighbor saying they approve to have chickens near their property. So, that's another thing to consider. So, because we think the people that actually do wanna do this, it's actually not a law... All Hartford is not gonna have chickens overnight, right? So, the people that actually wanna do this, they're your hobby farmers, they're people that actually take a lot of pride as much as they do in their pets, into these chickens. So, any hurdle that we ask for them to overcome, if they're serious about it, they'll do it. And those are the kind of people that this is for, not for people who wanna kind of not be good neighbors.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Sorry, I'm new to the conversation. That includes no roosters?
No roosters allowed. Only up to six hens. Anything beyond that is just ridiculous.
All right. So, what I'll do is let that conversation happen with you, Cindy. And if you and Vlad come to an agreement, and you wanna do that, give me a holler and we'll have that discussion and see if we can put it on. We would probably have to have then figure out what we... What our wording would be if we were gonna rewrite that ordinance, 'cause I...
They do have some old ordinance, and I've got some ordinances from the other communities, too, so we could put something together. We have some, yeah.
All right.
I think I just, like I mentioned, and I'll get back to you again, I just would like to hear from a few other folks to make sure there's support. I did check out the Facebook page, so I appreciate the link.
Sure.
A lot of them are not living in the city of Hartford from my Facebook sleuthing, but a number of them are. So, I just am interested in making sure it's something that we have a number of people interested in and supporting rather than just a small handful.
Okay. Any other Ward 3 person? Do you know Teresa offhand? How many developments are covenanted without them? Do you know?
I can look. Most of the developments that have covenants don't allow them, so we probably have six, seven, maybe. I can find that out for sure if the discussion goes on. Yep.
Yeah, we should probably know that and maybe make... If we're gonna put this on the agenda, we should make a minute to reach out to them so they know what's coming if we're gonna have that conversation. Correct?
Yep. I can get that information.
And they can be jealous of all of us who don't live in the covenant, that we got chickens.
Yeah.
All right. Is there nothing else for me?
No, I don't believe so. Thank you.
And he wants to sit through the whole thing, I know, but I think I'm gonna get him back home and finish it.
There you go. All right, thanks. Anybody else? All right, we're past 7:05. Let's go to public hearings. We have the renewal of the malt beverage licenses for Hartford. You see our staff summary? This is for Buffalo Ridge, Sea Coffee Cup, Get to Go, Brown Jug, Dollar General, American Inn, Stomping Grounds.
They're all the current license holders. The only one that's not on the list is the goat, but that's going through a transfer because of an ownership transfer. That's later on the...
And Backdoor Guards.
Oh, are they on this list, too? Did I misread them?
Um, I just noticed that. They weren't included. No, they're not renewing because they're going through an ownership change as well.
Okay. So, that'll come forward.
On a future agenda.
Okay. All right. Do I have any motions from the council?
Motion to approve renewal of malt beverage licenses as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I just had a question. Do we have a limited number or are we able to continue issuing or how does...
Malt beverages, we have unlimited number. The liquor licenses are limited by our population, and we are full now. We are at our max now. And then so until we gain more population, we won't have another license available unless someone gets theirs up. But malt beverages, we have, all cities have an unlimited number.
And I already agreed that as far as we know, the compliance checks and everything.
As of last year, none of these had violations.
All right. Any more discussion? If not, we'll vote. Okay.
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Matson?
Yes.
Wasslerger?
Yes.
Good? I gotta stop myself from saying that I'm a yes, but I think I should just say it. Uh, next on the agenda, special event permit for jamboree days. They're asking for a special event permit, approval of malt beverage license, and release of their funds. Leah, you should just come up and talk to us, just so you know.
Hey, guys. Welcome to this time of year again. Yay. All right. So, we've been busy, as you can see on the agenda. I did attach that to the special events permit. The two that were in red were only because I had not had them 100% confirmed with the senior center as of yet. And Craig did get that approved at the end of last week. So, the pitch tournament and bingo are a goal as well. So, yeah, any questions you have on the agenda and stuff.
And your dance is still in the... Not dance, or whatever you wanna call it. I guess dance or concert is in the park.
Correct.
Was there thought of moving it back downtown or no?
No.
You did have a grounds full of support from the downtown communities, our businesses after last...
Because I know there was discussion last year after this, Keel.
There was, and nobody's approached us since. Since. I can tell you cleanup on Sunday was a third of the time, and none of us had to worry about getting cut by glass. And considering those are volunteers that we pay for, that's a good thing that you don't have that risk. Normally on Sunday, it's myself, a few of our committee members, and then our volunteer group. And downtown, and you would think in a matter of one, two and a half blocks, it shouldn't take you very long, but it was averaging less than two hours. Most of that's glass. The park, we gauged for a longer period because we have much more space to clean, and we were done in a half hour. What are we gonna do here? So, it went very smooth last year. We had probably one of the bigger turnouts last year. We didn't really hardly have any issues. We... It went way smoother than we could have ever imagined. Some of that I think has to do with the fact that it's malt beverages down there only, so...
Yeah. All right. I would say let's deal with these separately. So, let's deal with the special event permit first. Do we have any motions on that?
I would make a motion to approve the special event permit for jamboree days.
All right. I'll second.
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion or questions? Not. Let's vote on that one. Wasslerger?
Yes.
Matson?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
All right. Let's move down to the malt beverage. One is the next one. You already kind of explained that's... You put your hours on there, and you're gonna just keep it in the park, right?
Yep. That lives in the past when we've had it downtown, we've also had to extend past the park perimeters where it actually makes it kind of easy that if you're outside of the park perimeters and you walk around with no container, that's not us. So, the cops don't have to question whether or not what side they fall on, so...
Is Sunday for the tractor pull?
No, Sunday is only the community version.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I can hear hearing that.
No, you don't have... The beer hours is not for that. I believe it stops at 11:30. You wanna try a break?
Not everybody's moving. There you go. Wow. Okay.
Wishful thinking. Wishful thinking.
Do we have any motions on that one, on the special event, our special alcohol license?
Totally.
I'll run a second.
A second.
Any further discussion? All right, now we vote. O'Hara?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Matson?
Yes.
Wasslerger?
Yes.
All right, that one approved. Let's move to the third one, is your request for your funds as budgeted, correct?
Correct. The only difference, as you see, is only for jamboree days. There is no request for the carnival funding at this time. The carnivals we've tried to get, most of the time carnivals will contract for multiple years. So, most of the carnivals around here have already gotten pre-designated contracts. We could have potentially gotten one with just a few rides, but for 35 thousand, and you had to send a multiple contract. So, we weren't willing to stick our neck out quite that far. So, if there's a community that ends a contract and the contract opens up, there is that potential. Jeff has dealers out to see if we can even get maybe one or two rides. Gas prices are kind of hindering that. So, I'm not gonna say it's 110% forfeited, but I will not ask for it then as long as it's original carnival. I'm pretty good about making sure.
Um, I know Amy wasn't feeling that she had to go home. Chamber, have any thoughts on the carnival?
No, they've done things now.
Okay, so they've kind of backed away from...
They've washed their hands of it.
Okay.
That's kind of...
And no reach out from them either regarding should we get the carnival back or not?
No.
No? Okay.
Wait. If you wanna stop at my office tomorrow, right downtown, I'd be a number for a carnival.
Sure.
I actually have several carnivals that are lights full.
All right. Which?
That's the whole thing.
Okay. Yes.
All right.
Just stop in and get that information along.
Perfect.
Good. All right. Anything else?
I might be back asking.
Okay, well, that's fine.
Maybe detail oriented on your financials. I think it was a typo, but you have a lot more in your logistics budget. Was that for some particular purpose? Uh, the logistics piece of it...
It comes really like 13...
Yes, bleachers. We purchased bleachers. Which those bleachers, we purchased them, we asked to use them over the jamboree weekend. However, they're currently placed actually in the Baldimons, that's adjacent to the park. So, the city actually uses them throughout the year. And that was this year. We just got them, got them all put together, and they look really pretty down there. I didn't put that together. I only have about moving some bleachers somewhere.
We talked about using bleachers. We're in the dugouts, but there'll probably be some of the bleachers we used. But, yeah, the bleachers that they purchased, we're using at our sports complex and our facilities, and they just use them on jamborees. So, it's kind of a win-win.
All right. Do we have any motions on the jamboree day committee requests for the...
Motion to approve funding request for jamboree days as presented.
I'll second.
I'll second. Any further discussion? Questions? If not, we'll vote. Wasslerger?
Yes.
Matson?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
All right.
All right.
Let's know if you need anything else.
I will. Thank you, guys.
Always look forward. That's a busy weekend.
Uh-huh. It's busy. I'm all the way up to the weekend. You should check my schedule.
Well, that's my birthday weekend.
Well, then you have to come out. We have music and everything.
Music and everything. That sounds so rude. Well, they always schedule it around my birthday. I appreciate that very much. All right. Thanks, Leah.
Thank you.
All right. 7:15 public hearing. Transfer the on and off sale liquor licenses. The information is in your packet. This is regarding from the Goat LLC to Goat Bar and Grill LLC. All the paperwork is in place. I see the only thing, Karen, that looked like they were missing was their tax number.
Yeah, they were still obtaining in the process of obtaining.
That's the only thing I noticed that they... And they noted that on their application.
Yeah.
Any motions or questions on this?
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of their liquor license to the Goat LLC.
I'll second. All right. Any further discussion? I'm not missing out. What's the date of this? Is this June 1? No. What is the transfer date? Am I missing?
Well, as soon as I send it in, it's just a problem sometimes. He'll do it right away.
Okay. Okay. So, we don't have a firm date as when it actually transfers, or when... Are they requesting a transfer?
They're not requesting an actual date, so I'll send it in. It'll get transferred. And then we'll have to go through the renewal process that we just did on the malts for their malt. So, you'll see that again. But that's just the way the state does it. Unfortunately, it's right before.
Will you hold this until you get that tax ID number?
The state probably won't process it until they have a sales tax license in force. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Not? We'll vote. O'Hara?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Matson?
Yes.
Wasslerger?
Yes.
All right. So, we'll look forward to that. Karen, thank you.
Sure.
Reports. We don't have Mr. Horn here, so you... Oh, yeah, he does. Geez, I didn't see ya.
Oh.
Yeah.
Trying to stay out of it.
Sorry.
Lost in the crowd.
A lot of people do that with me. Yeah.
Good hanging.
A lot of people do that with me.
Uh, so, the report for this month, April, we had 32 calls, 13 within the city limits. Training for May, EMS is cardiac arrest management. Fire is fire alarm panels, and combined we did a bloodborne pathogen training. Other than that, I don't believe we have anything special going on this month. Just a little note about the storms. We had, uh... We had people down at the station before the storm had even completely gone all the way through. If you weren't aware, there were some communication issues with us and Metro Communications that we do our dispatching through because the whole southeastern side of the state was going through the same thing, and the state radio system was basically overwhelmed. But thankfully, we had our disaster training about the two weeks before that. So, we had already had a plan in place to utilize cell phones and alternate means of communication in the event that were to happen. So, there were a lot of lessons that we learned from that training that we were able to put into work on that day. So, I think it was good timing.
Teresa and Craig and I met yesterday to kind of do a debrief on the storm and things that I noticed, I guess, or that I wanted to make sure moving forward that we were ready for. The biggest question that I seem to have from the citizens is, how come the sirens don't go? And we confirmed that is not our call. That's not a local call. That comes from the EMS or the emergency...
Comes from the emergency manager or the National Weather Service.
Yes. That's not a local call.
My understanding is they... I didn't ask the question. I'm curious myself if they... If I requested to set them off, I don't know if they would or not because it was not a tornado warned storm.
Right.
So, because generally, it's only for tornado warnings.
Right.
In this case, it seems like it may have been a good idea.
Yeah.
But at the same time, I get where they're coming from because you have to kind of have a line somewhere.
Yeah.
So...
That was one. Two, I will say, you guys did a great job. It was when we drove down there, Todd was there, and you guys were there. And you were right. Your radios were going off almost nonstop with all the stuff that was going on.
We had calls backed up for a while there.
Yeah.
And we were, you know, we were making a list, prioritizing everything like we talked about in the training, and it worked. It worked really good, so...
And we probably, here in Hartford, had more activity or as much as anybody because we had to send our trucks out on the highway because the interstate was cluttered with vehicles tipped over. I know later on in the evening, I was outside, and Jason and one of the other guys, I don't know his name, came by, and they were making the swing through the neighborhood, just checking to make sure everything's okay.
We did a damage assessment throughout the city. When our trucks that weren't on calls, we had them kind of drive around to see if there's anything that was going on that we didn't know about. And then we also had a couple trucks check all of our other populated areas around that we covered down in Wall Lake and down by Wild Water West and all that stuff, so...
All in all, in our recap, man, we think we did a pretty darn good job of being as ready as we could be. And you're right, that training couldn't have been any better time. Because first thing I did when the storm rolled through was call Todd. And I said, "Okay, what do we need to, you know, do you need me to come to the fire station?" Then my driver came and got me.
Second call. I need somebody to get me a flip lane. Get me out of my garage.
Yeah, I got a bad back. Can somebody get me out of my garage?
Get out of my door.
It's terrible to have a background like this.
So, if you wanna keep the mayor home, just cut his power.
That's the moral of the story, right there. No, but I thought everything went really well. The city guy responded. I mean, Craig was calling right away. Fired up the generators and...
We got the dump open, yeah.
Yeah, we got the dump running. We may be seen on our website. We're leaving that open until tomorrow night full, and then we're gonna go back to regular hours starting on Thursday. We're exercising some lenience so we don't, you know, hey, you know, we gotta have some lenience with some people on the edges of our community, let's just say, because we got... A lot of people got issues.
And there's piles on the streets we're directing to bring out.
Yeah.
We're short... Craig and Jesse are at training, so we're short two guys.
Yeah.
And it will take this week and maybe into next week. So, we will. We'll be out and giving them. So, you can just tell people, are they ever gonna come? Yeah, we will, but we got a whole lot of other things going on as well, so... But don't come out there. We'll get cleaned up.
This is maybe... Hold on, Matt. This is as good as time to talk about it. We are gonna talk with our guy that runs his chipper, and we're gonna try to have him drag it down. We don't wanna handle this stuff anymore than we absolutely have to. So, we're gonna see if we can set up a chair.
Usually, we haul the branches up to, you know, our lagoon site where the wood chipper is. We'll just see if he'll come down here and select it. Because that's a lot of manpower, troops.
We would waste a lot of gas and time hauling all that stuff up there. So, we're gonna try to do that.
Right up until next week, yeah.
We are also gonna try to get the stumps collected, probably haul them up to the lagoon.
That will probably go there because we'll prop... You know, they can't... There's a lot of dirt around there. And we can't put them through the chipper, so we'll probably just burn them, you know, once they dry out.
Yeah. That might be a burn pile.
But you're not prepared to sell wood chips to the local playground.
Could be. So, Matt, I think you guys did a great job, and please pass that along to your troops. So, we appreciate it. Anybody got any questions for the fire chief?
Thank you.
Thanks. You bet. Thanks, man. Amy's not here. We have her report is in the... Was she hiding? Huh? I'm used to not noticing she's here. Why is she hiding?
She was just here right before... Oh, yeah, sorry.
Yeah. She was here.
Got it.
Yeah. I had a question for her this morning, and I called her. I cannot... It wasn't like me. I should have made her know. So... How's it going? Mary looks so... Yeah, she's got a lot of stuff going on. So... If we have any questions, we'll catch up with her. I wish, maybe she'll be there in the morning. I would think. All right. Let's move down to our city engineer report.
Thank you very much. We had a couple site plans, mainly, you know, the one that was... That's a little bit more cumbersome than the April pass apartments. We went through that, got some comments back, and going through some of that, DOT had some comments on that as well. So, we'll kind of look through that and get that ironed out. Overall, there's a couple additional plats, mainly on project updates. Turro Creek, we did go out there and finished a lift of asphalt along Tortuga, and that looked good. We had a couple of spots that we did milk there. And then we have the Vance Peterson. We did get a confirmation in regards to the timeline on that as well. Six a month railway reconstruction. Overall, we've got some feedback from the contractor in regards to the schedule because we really wanna get that schedule out to the residents so that they know when we're gonna come in and when they're gonna be impacted in the front door. They're trying to lock down their utility contractors, the main thing, is just seeing when they can get them scheduled in. And then that really impacts us because we want to schedule a pre-con, but we don't wanna schedule the pre-con a month in advance, and then they kind of forget about the project, and then we have to rehash everything when they get back on site. So, as soon as we get that information, we'll provide that to you as well. The water tower painting, just finalizing everything on the contracts and bonds and things like that. And then we'll get a plan from them as well. If you remember that one, we gave a little bit more, a longer timeframe than what they need. But really, what we have is, when you get on... but really what we have is when you get on site, you have X amount of time to get completed because that's really all we care about. Um, it's not like the water tower right now is going to fall down if it doesn't get paved or anything like that. We just want to be really comfortable with when they get in, that they can get it done so that they're not lingering from that aspect. Uh, the water resource recovery facility, uh, we still have a couple of proposals that we're, we're finalizing on the geotechnical services. Our survey crew has completed the topo. The topo, the topo was actually collected, uh, with our LiDAR drone system. Um, we knew that that was going to be kind of a, especially the, the, the collection system line that was going to go immediately adjacent to thirty-eight. We didn't really want to get a lot of impact there. We thought that there's also some utility contracts, contractors that are working out there. So we utilized our LiDAR there. We'll actually then pull some, some additional, uh, survey information when we actually put that together. That'll be some folks that'll actually get out there. But we wrapped that up. So, um, really what we're working through right now is the P and IDs. Um, that's a profit process, an inflow diagram, and that's all of the water wastewater side really working on that before we pull in our other disciplines. Because water wastewater team is clearly the, the key component to that design. Uh, but then we'll pull in our electrical team and we'll pull in our mechanical team and our architectural team, our structural team. But really right now, we're working through the, the process, um, on the inflow and the treatment side. So, uh, working through that design right now. And then we are working through some additional meetings on the regionalization aspect and having some meetings with the communities as well to, to weigh their, you know, how interested you are. Um, truly seeing really how things are coming together with you, with you folks and really moving forward. Um, some of that stuff that's going to be coming forward as well. The bike and wreck trail, uh, we updated a perimeter layout of the trail segment to actually have discussions with the landowners. Um, and we've actually provided that trail exhibit to Craig, um, so you can have some of those discussions. Uh, we've had a couple of those discussions that have, uh, one of those that went really, really well. One of them that I think we're going to have a little bit of, um, concern on and totally understandable, uh, that's, you know, right in my backyard and trying to work through some of that uh, to make sure that we can keep moving forward on that. Uh, the storm shelter, um, we, we did have a meeting with CCOG. Um, do you have additional information on that one?
We, yeah, we know the state has a mitigation officer, Heather, she's, uh, like the state's arm of FEMA essentially. Uh, we had some questions on the benefit to cost ratio, which is how they identify if a project is feasible. Basically, the benefit of the project, uh, which they assign a monetary value to has to be higher than the cost for it to be feasible. Um, and, uh, based on our updated numbers, you know, from current construction conditions versus when it was submitted two years ago, those are, those are very different now. Um, so we had talked to Heather, uh, who indicated we should go to CCOG to see what was in the grant application and then we talked to CCOG, um, and directed us to the actual calculator that they used. Um, and, you know, we tried it, I think, four different ways using, uh, either the original values, uh, and new values. And it seems like they've updated the calculator, so there's, from what we're seeing, uh, there should be more, um, leniency in the benefits. So, uh, we're hoping to talk with Heather again, get all of that confirmed and see what we can do to make this project happen.
Do we still think maybe that could happen this year?
We're hopeful. It's, it's not, it's not a huge design task. I mean, it's, it's not a huge, a huge facility by any means. Um, but really what we don't want to do is, we don't want to commit overly to designing the facility as is and then you sit there and find out that you're paying us to design a facility that you can't, can't afford or you're, you don't have the funding for. So we're really trying to isolate that and, and, and I think, I think as, as we've looked at the update on the, the benefit to cost ratio, uh, model, I think FEMA probably aware that the construction costs of two years ago aren't the same as the construction costs of today. Um, so I think that's helping us, uh, for sure. So I think working through that, but we really want to get that really good reassurance before we continue to move forward on it. So I think we can get it designed, but I think our, our main intent is to make sure that we're getting the capital, uh, from, from FEMA that is necessary to construct that facility. At least closing the gap significantly from what it is right now.
Yeah, because it's.
When are we off right now?
Almost twice as much, basically, where the calculations are coming in. We don't have that in budget. That's going to be a lot of our reserves. So I definitely want to confirm the cost figures. So you guys can make, uh, you know, an informed decision moving forward of what we should do or what we shouldn't do. So when we meet with the state, we can kind of get that all narrowed down. It sounds like there's a process that they alluded to that, you know, we could get more money from, for the grant if this, you know, calculation comes out, but I want to confirm all that obviously before.
Remind me what, twice, what is the amount?
Uh, so the original estimate was, I want to say right around eight fifty.
Yeah, I'd say right around eight hundred and thirty.
I think our updated estimates right around one three.
Well, depending on what design, you take one point three to one point five, so, yeah, that's, that's a significant difference.
That's pretty good, uh, it's not all electrical, I can tell you that.
There was a generator that was not included, which.
I think we have a little issue to, uh, what capacity we got to design for too. So we need to clear that because original was like a hundred fifty, now we're thinking maybe three hundred. So what is it? Because I mean, that's going to make a difference in the size of the building and the cost, so.
Yeah, that was, that was really some confusion in the application that was submitted.
One portion shows a fifty, yeah, one showed three hundred, so.
It's a little bit confusing.
Yeah, so there's questions that we need to sit down with the state and get answers and then we can figure out, yeah, what do we want to do.
Yeah, we got to get closer than that. That's going to be a hard, that's going to be a hard project to.
Absolutely, I mean, especially when, uh, we, we know it's great to have the storm shelter out there, you know, absolutely.
Right.
But, but at the same time, I know a, a big intent of that is that concession standard.
Right.
And looking at that, if you didn't have to follow FEMA guidelines and you sit there and say, well, geez, what would that cost? A heck of a lot less. So, so that's where we were trying to be realistic too.
Want to make the most responsible choice for this city.
Correct.
Yeah, so. So one more update on that. The Highway thirty-eight water main extension was, uh, was a small one that, uh, was actually creating the loop, um, that comes down Colton Road and then tying that back into thirty-eight. Really kind of over by Mickelson and where the, the Turo Creek development would come in and tie in that water main. Um, had discussions with DOT. DOT, not surprisingly, doesn't want to put the water main in that right away. Um, they're expanding the right away. They know things are going to continue to evolve. I'm, I'm not surprised that they, they don't want the water main in that right away. You also have the development that's going to extend significant water main directly into that property. So we're really now evaluating whether we would even want the water main adjacent to the roadway or would we want to eventually tie directly into that development where that water main's coming up that line where it's going to serve additional properties. Um, so we're, we're looking through that. We also have a water main connection that's going to go across thirty-eight that's going to tie back down by the lift station. So we're putting together some cost estimates to evaluate which one we want to go through because if that development actually takes off and they really move into, I would almost call it phase three, that would really get close to creating that loop that we, we actually want to anyway. And remember, the water main that's going to be adjacent to the highway is only going to serve one area, which is actually those developed homes there. So we're kind of trying to think long term. Does it make sense to even be in that right away? Or do we really want to go in the future right away that would tie into the, the future development? So there's going to be more to come on that right now, so that's where we're, we're holding off a little bit on that as that development comes because we want to really think long term planning wise in regards to creating investments for the community as that southeast expansion continues. And really, the, especially with the amount of water main that the development's going to put in, we could upsize that for a small incremental cost and then really be paying for a bit of our conveyance through that development. So, so we're doing some planning on that and, uh, we'll be back with additional information, um, at a later date.
Yeah.
Any questions on those particular items or any comments?
I have one. So you said DOT had questions on, uh, Maple Pass when you were talking to him about that. Was that specifically road related or what were they?
Ooze access into that Maple Pass development.
Okay, right.
Yes.
Right.
Yep.
That's what I figured, so. That was, that's their biggest question. Are we targeted yet to have that be a turn lane intersection?
Yes.
Twenty twenty-four.
Oh, yeah.
Twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Yep.
Because really that affects that as that moves forward.
Are you talking about the Mickelson?
Mickelson where it would shoot across to go to Maple Pass.
Is that going to be, is that like a straight through cross street or is that going to be?
That will be, that will obviously, we'll, we'll, uh.
It just doesn't look like it right now.
No, and it's really, I mean, it doesn't look like it even if you look at it on map because they're both at curves. So we're really trying to line up the center lines as they square up and tee into the roadway with the, as they square up and tee into the opposite roadway. So it looks a little confusing because you got about three different angles working at you.
Right.
I understand that, yep, yep. But we are going to try to line those up.
Yeah, and it's already a busy road, you know.
Yeah. Boy, it'd be nice.
I was just at a DOT meeting and they still plan to do the turning lane at that intersection and at the one at Row Road two as well.
Okay. Because it would really be nice if we could get that, keep that conversation going with them guys.
It's already a difficult.
Yeah, it is. And it's just going to continue to keep getting upset.
And, and remember that that's only the center turn. It's a, it's a suicide center turn, right?
Well, that's what we should call it, yeah.
Well, the center turn that turns both.
Straight down.
We'll be turning directly, you know, as they come, it's the center lane turn. So you're going to be turning, the other one's going to be turning the opposite direction, turning both.
Yeah, turn lanes if you had the head.
Yep.
Yeah.
Oh.
Your description's spot on. We don't want to use the word trick.
Just like Mickelson.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then Maple Avenue, the Villarreal, the Hardest End is three lane two with that same center turn lane.
Okay.
So.
Okay. I'll just hear this because I thought maybe that was, okay. Interesting. Okay. Anybody else got any questions on any of the other stuff that they? Bombarded this one so far. If not, uh, we have an action item on here to review, approve the engineering for Western Avenue expansion. Teresa, is this in your report or in your recap? This has been in the CIP for a while, we don't think they're going to. Redo the bridge in twenty twenty-five. This is the best time for us to coordinate with them to get our, get Western done past, at least past Mickelson.
Right there, yeah.
Is what we're proposing right now.
Yep.
And so the proposal is the same one that was in last meeting. Um, as you know, some report, we, me and Craig did sit down with the DOT, with the county and discuss Western going north. Um, they don't disagree that that's a busy street and that shoulders would be great and some better drainage to there, but that it's going to be a really expensive project for them and they just don't have the funding for it. So it's not even slated on their agenda at this point, um, just because of the cost. They, they mentioned that they had to turn down one of the projects that was on their budget this year because it came in over cost and doing something like this just isn't feasible. So, um, they did agree to partner with us to do a traffic study, which will help. Um, it, it's a little more expensive than just traffic counts. They'll do a traffic study and that will help kind of gauge, you know, kind of get it on their radar and on the books for, you know, in the future, but they don't see it in their five-year CIP or maybe not even their ten, so. Until we get on both sides of the road and it's ours, we can't do anything at this point because we don't have any jurisdiction over it, so. The plan is, yeah, the proposal will be then from, you know, um, the state will come basically almost right short of Diamond Trail and then we would take over from that spot to just through the intersection of Mickelson so we can get all our turning, you know, in the intersection.
Right. The proposal you put, okay, go ahead.
Well, see, your proposal is a lot smaller section than we've been discussing. It's from Diamond Trail through Mickelson Road.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Because the self quoted DOT has that design up to Diamond Trail on some.
Yep, 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 right, yep, right up to Diamond Trail. They'll do all that.
By the time they get all their radiuses done, they get pretty darn close to that.
Sure.
As they reconfigure.
Yeah, and as we discussed in a previous meeting, it's actually a few or a hundred feet or three hundred feet north of Mickelson technically. Right, is that fair, fair assessment? Doesn't just stop.
Yeah, because you need, you need, you know, your turn lanes have to be a certain length depending on speed and how many cars you want to stay there. And then you have to have that taper, that widening at a certain rate. So those, those two really determine how far past that intersection we have.
That'd be, there's already turn lane in Mickelson, so that'll be turn lanes on both, at both sides of Western, correct?
Yep.
It'll be three lanes going all the way down.
Three lanes.
All that way through that intersection.
Yeah.
Right.
So what we, our residents can expect is if you're southbound, it'll be a turn lane to go.
Mickelson.
East onto Mickelson and if you're northbound, it'll be a turn lane to go west onto Mickelson.
Yes.
For the fair statement.
Yes.
I think it'll be the three lanes, it'll be the center turn lane, so the three lane will actually be the right turn lane as well. Going north on Mickelson.
Correct, correct, right, right. Northbound. Yeah, all right. Just get it visually. Yeah, so that's focused, yeah.
And this is to get us to construction document phase?
This is to get us to, I, I think this is, how did we, we're separating the CIP on the two, two years of actually design on it.
So this is phase one of design.
Okay.
So it involves, uh, the traffic study, which really will dictate the design and then prelim design. Um, and at the, at the end of that, uh, we'll, you know, provide a cost estimate, just estimate the cost at that point um, and kind of come back with our findings and get the AOK to move forward or if you have any preferences or changes that you'd like to see.
And we separated those in the CIP as well as a phase one, phase two.
Okay.
And we did have a meeting with DOT. Um, they have their planning, is what I would call it, done. Uh, they said design done. The, there's, there's no construction documents done, but, but they have their planning of it done. Um, so they're, they are moving forward for sure on the project. I mean, they, you're showing, they're showing that they are upholding their, um, their timeline and their timeline is twenty twenty-four.
Midletting will be twenty twenty-four with construction in twenty twenty-five, definitely.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Do you have any motions by the council?
Motion to approve professional service proposal, design phase one as presented.
Any further discussion or questions? Not, well, well, Los Larder.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
All right. You guys got anything else?
That's it.
I'll touch on, uh, one comment David made, uh, we're meeting with the other communities on regionalization on the thirty-first of May. So. It's coming up. Couple of weeks from tonight. So be interesting to, it'd be interesting to see how many we get in the room and see how, how that goes. That's all I'm going to say. It'll be fun, it'll be great. All right, thanks you guys.
Thank you.
Uh, Craig, as Teresa mentioned, is out in, uh, him and Jesse are out taking their level three, or what do they call that? Level three operator test. I don't know if it's tomorrow, it's Thursday, right? Thursday morning, I think he said he, they have two days of classes and then a half a day of test, so.
Couple of items I have regarding, I guess, utilities will be water tower on Ninth Street. Seems to be quite a bit of activity on that.
Um, it is, um, the, um, we have a lease for a cell tower on there. They're, um, changing out some of their equipment on the tower there. So nothing with the tower itself, it's the antennas for, um, that company, it's T-Mobile, I'm sure they has it.
Oh, sure. So they're upgrading and they're changing up.
Yep, they're kind of upgrading some of their equipment, so that's the activities here on there. Nothing that the city's doing or nothing with the tower itself. Yeah, they have antennas on there that they lease from us, the space.
Looked like maybe some of their, like maybe their job boxes on the adjoining property owners' land. I guess we haven't gotten a complaint about it.
Oh, no, okay. They done, oh, tools? They done, oh, tools?
To the, no, to the, to the west.
To the west.
The apartment, the apartment.
Oh, the department?
Signs on Highway 38.
That's, that's.
You come off of I-90, like you're looking at a half blown down sign.
Oh, yeah, oh, yes, yes.
Thirty-eight.
Yeah, they know that.
It, it's on the guy's to-do list.
Gotcha.
To, to remove those.
They were on their plan today and I thought, geez, yeah, we should, I know they've got other stuff to do, but it's on the to-do list.
It is on the to-do list, we got on there last week, but.
The sports complex, there was, it looks like a little bit of damage, but nothing, looks like the backstops and everything survived, okay?
Yeah, we got a little bit of fencing damage. The roofs of the one dugout, I think the southwest field were blown off. One of the bleachers got bent, that is there, so. All in all, they are, if you're talking about storm damage, that's kind of, and then the batting cage out there, so those kind of tore up.
Yeah.
And then in the main part, we have a tree fell on the fencing of the basketball court, probably still see it there. And then the old, old concession building used to be, we use it for storage building now. Little bit of shingles roof damage there and then some shingle damage on the amphitheater too. Is there, Brian knows the, the welcome signs, those got kind of blown out, so we got damage from that. Besides that, I mean, we have some bent signs and some bent over light poles, but the signs, we think we can straighten up and put back. Sioux Valley will, you know, work on the poles, we have a maintenance contract with them, so. All in all, that's about all we, the city has for storm damage. We've already turned in a claim and we have an adjuster coming out, I believe, and he said either Friday or Monday to walk through with me to kind of look at everything, so we're kind of taking care of all that.
Thank you. Edward, because of the potential for, if any declarations or any fundings available, we're tracking all of our stuff. Because we had Zacharias in for a full day and we're, and the overtime for the guys, so we're tracking all that information.
Yeah, we track all hours of our guys, I mean, anything we pay out to Zacharias. We'll have a tree company come in, Arbor's get kind of some of the big stuff and we'll probably eventually have to do something with the stumps with the boulevards and things, so, yeah, we keep track of all those expenses and those hours, so any declaration comes through, we can get with all storms, so.
Yep.
We're already on it, here.
All right, anything else? And Craig, I think that's probably it. I know that once we get these trees picked up, they'll be running the street sweeper probably like.
Yeah, like always, every day.
Broom or whatever. They have a bad broom, broom on some of these streets, but. It's a mess.
It'll be a job, it's like I said, it, it won't all get done this week and not next week, we're, we'll just keep working at it.
Or just delay the dog park.
Well, I might, I don't.
Might delay the dog park, right?
Am I?
Yeah. All right. Let's move on to Karen's report. Karen, you got any additional to add?
No, I don't. Basic stuff.
Looks like we still got some money.
There's ice cream with a cop today, how did that go?
I think, I was saying, I think he said that got postponed, yeah. And, and the midco, um, ground, ground, they postponed as well and I don't know what a future date of that is.
Yeah. Yeah. And did you make a comment in here, Karen, about the auditors, they were here, everything, they'll, we'll have a report and some?
Yep, we should have a report in a few months, I would assume, but yeah, it went well, they were scheduled for two days and they were here just one, so that was nice.
Did it good or bad?
Yeah, I don't know.
I suppose their notes also will be lost.
Yeah.
Yeah, I suppose not, yeah. All right.
Who does their audit? What's that? Who does their audit?
Quam, Burden, and Post.
Quam, yeah.
They're at El Point. There's a handful of firms, you have to have a firm that is licensed in municipalities, so there's a handful in the state that can do municipal audits, and so they're wonderful.
All right, anything else for Karen? If not, we'll move on to Teresa's remaining report. Anything extra you need to add?
I'd say engineers took a lot of it, so I'm gonna go through a lot of that stuff. I do want to touch base and they're kind of put on the agenda, I do want to have a little discussion about our summer health and especially the summer rec program. Pretty much, we've got everything, everybody hired for our summer. The pool set's open tomorrow. We have all the personnel we need, the manager assistants, lifeguards. We could use one or two more lifeguards, so we'll take apps if they come in, but we have enough to get it open and get it running, so I think that's all okay. The summer rec program, and that's our summer program, we have it just in July during the morning hours during the week. Laura Johnson used to be our director of that program, she is not doing it this year. We do have a gal that's going to take her place, but that is the one and only employee that we have for the program. And to run it with the number of kids we usually have, and we usually have about thirty kids per age group and there's four different age groups, it takes about four people. So we always hire a director that kind of just plans all the activities for the kids. We have a coordinator who's a second adult that kind of helps with that and then two assistants that are usually high school kids, they just need to be fifteen or older. I did have a couple apps for the assistant. One of them, it turns out that she cannot do July hours, so that's a no-go. And then I had an interview today and she didn't show up, so. We kind of got a situation is we got to start thinking about, do we have the program or do we not this year? The director that we do have hiring, that's Lori Spees is her name, she would like to know within the next week or two whether we're going to, because if we're not going to have the program, if we don't have the help, she obviously wants to find other employment, so you can't blame her on that, you know? Can't expect her to sit around, you know, for July and then decide not to have the program. So I guess what I'm looking here is I, I still want to throw it up there, I mean, we've contacted the high schools, we've put it on websites, we've put it on Facebook a few times. We've put it, we have a Facebook Park and Rec site that a lot of the parents go to, we've thrown it on there. We'll still continue to do that, but I guess I'm looking for the council, if we don't meet again until June sixth, this Lori would like to know before then, so are you comfortable giving me the leeway to, if we can get some applicants to hire and move on or make the call of whether we have it or not? We are getting inquiries from parents whether we're going to have the program or not, you want me to sign up? And, and I know those that attended, I mean, it's, it's a good program, they enjoy it, they, they like it. We have, like I said, roughly about thirty kids in each age group. Obviously more in the younger ones, it kind of tapers off, the older ones get to it, but I guess what are your thoughts and feeling that I, it's hard to run a program without staff?
Yeah, I'd say that's what we need to do, we really need to bring a date.
Cut off that.
What's the Friday right before Memorial Day? Twenty-seventh, eighth, maybe twenty-eighth? Twenty-seventh or eighth?
Twenty-seventh, that's Friday.
Let's kind of pick the twenty-seventh, I would say for a drop dead. If you can get some applications and you feel comfortable with that, then I'm fine if, I mean, Teresa's our city administrator, this is the kind of stuff that we should, that she can decide. I would, the only thing I would ask is whichever way you go, just let us know.
Oh, definitely.
Shoot an email out to us so we know what's going on.
Right.
In case we get asked by parents.
Yeah, we'll put notice, I mean, if we end up canceling it, well, either way, we'll put notice out to the public so they know what's going on as well, and so it's definitely let you guys know. And if it happens to be canceled this year, it's not, not like something I can't do it next year or, you know, whatnot, but it's definitely, and I've talked with the, the past people that have gone, it's definitely a four-person job.
Yeah.
We had, last year, we had one of the assistants who couldn't come for a few days, it was like three or four days, and Laura said it's, it's done with only three people, so it's a four-person job, so.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I want to know, I'll keep looking.
Anything else you got, Teresa's at it?
Um, nothing that's, everything else in my report, any questions?
Yep. Any questions for Teresa? Not, we'll wheel down to new business. First thing is review approve county plat for track three B in the Christianson addition. You see Teresa's notes, this is in conjunction with the Maple Pass. There is a plating difference, is that the?
Well, so the property to the north, they were doing some plating, they're looking at possibly selling it, the owners are looking at possibly selling it. And when they were surveying the property, they noticed that this parcel here, if you look on the plat in the map, there's a shed kind of in the northeast corner that isn't quite on their property, isn't on their property.
Still not on their property.
It's still not on their property, no.
It's playing in the field.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Oh, maybe it's moved for them. I didn't realize that.
Oh, but did it get blown out?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, boy.
Oh.
I didn't realize that, though.
So basically, when they found that this, that their shed was not on their property, they asked to plot it off and to include that on the plat. So that's what this plat is. For those new in council, you know, this is not in the city, it's in the county, but it's in our growth area and we have plating jurisdiction, so that means all replats, new plats or replats have to go through the city for our approval first. It goes to planning and zoning, which it did at their last meeting and they approved it, and then city council for final approval, approval, and then they can move on and file it with the county.
And as part of that, they sign a pre-annexation agreement.
Yep, that's part of our subdivision regulations and basically that's an agreement that just says, when and if the city ever asks you to annex, you know, basically they don't fight it, I mean, they'll, they'll let it extend, but that's, that's, and it doesn't mean if we're touching you or whatnot, it's just if you're asked to. And that's all been signed and taken care of, so they followed all our regulations.
I did take a phone call from Terry on this, kind of explaining the annexation agreement.
Great.
Even if you were surrounded by city, which essentially that track A A, or so, would be, so forced into.
It, it's still at the council discretion of whether we enforce it or not.
Correct.
Basically, it says, you know, if the city touches you and asks you to annex, you will.
Yeah.
City touches a lot of property, all on our outside borders we touch and we're not annexing that, and so that's, it does, you know, kind of the circumstances.
But it, it sets everything in motion, so in case we get to that point, there's.
Right, in case there is a viable reason.
Things like, yeah, the opportunity.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
It just saves having any discussion down the road.
Yeah, problems down the road, yeah.
So. Need a motion to get that approved?
I'll make a motion to approve the re-plat as requested.
Give it a second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Just, it's just a little curious to me. Yeah, it'd probably be an opportunity to come back and say, maybe we don't want to do this, your shed's no longer there, but.
I would say they don't have to plow it with the county if they don't want to.
I'd joke by the day and I went, huh. Yep, that really did blow.
All right, any other discussion on this? If not, we'll vote O'Hara.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Loslawler.
Yes.
All right. Second on the new business is pay, pay request number three for sewer project to site works on our sewer going north. Recommendation in the packet, the background.
Motion to approve pay request number three to site works for thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-four cents.
Hold on a second. Any discussion on this? If not, we'll vote Loslawler, yes. Mattson.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
All right.
Excuse me.
Next on the, can I move this and talk about the other two first and then go back to the top, the one last? Save that one for last, is that, is that okay?
Yep.
Um, so we're going to jump down to the Merrill Hill appointments for the Park and Rec Board. We need, as per the ordinance and the deal we laid out, we were going to have one city council member, one staff appointed to do that. I would like to appoint Chris Loslawler from the council and Craig Wagner from city staff to be the two representatives. So if that is okay, if somebody can give me a motion, we'll get them put in place. So move. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. O'Hara.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Loslawler. You have to say yes. I'm not trying to tell you what to do, but.
You're so.
That sound you hear, that's a train going, you know? Thank you, Chris. I did call Chris at that time.
It's okay.
This was not a complete railroad job. I did call him and ask him. I'm not that, I'm not that mean. All right. The next one that was on there, maybe I'm in the backboard because I did break off a new, new agenda, the rebranding we discussed moving forward with Aiken and Schultz, right?
Yes, that's what the.
We have a subcommittee, Cindy sits on that from the council, Mark Brenneman, but he was unable to attend. I was there, superintendent was there, Amy, Teresa, right? Is that it? Is there anybody else? No.
Was that?
No. And we had a really, we had a really nice discussion, looked over the proposals and the consensus of the group was is that we move forward with Aiken and Schultz to begin that rebranding process. So I would assume we need a motion to approve that contract?
Can, can I ask a question?
Yes, you can.
Step up?
You bet.
Sure. Benjamin Parker, what's the purpose of the rebranding? I mean, we've been on the edge of everything for twelve years from what I could find. Why rebrand?
Right now, we have three different, three different homes. Chamber has one, Development Foundation has one, and the city has one. My opinion and what we're, I'm hoping we're going to discover with this is it would be nice to get us to one unified look and tag for the city. That's my, that was my intent, Benjamin, with doing this.
I, I can understand why you have it to be unified. Would it not be easier for the Chamber and the other to?
Go to this?
On the edge of everything since they don't physically have the physical presence as far as signs and everything that has to be changed and all that expense? I mean, we're talking several hours of computer work, you know, versus thousands of dollars in labor and material and man hours. This is, I can say, that feel right off. Well, that, that'll feel off, but I mean, our signs that just blow over in the school have been there for years, you know, I mean, those signs have gone up.
From my standpoint, we're a different community than we were that number of years ago and it's.
How is that? You're still on the edge of everything with Sioux Falls, Amazon Development.
That's your opinion, that's not a fact.
We are on the edge, are we not?
You believe that that's where we are.
Are we Sioux Falls?
We're not in Sioux Falls, we're on the edge of Sioux Falls, we're outside of Sioux Falls right now, but I, I think it's, you know, time for a rebrand and an update to make sure that our, you know, city is presenting itself in a way that's attractive to new families and new businesses.
And I believe that our current model on the edge of everything makes that valid point clear and distinct to somebody that's looking at Hartford Community as a place of residence for a business.
Another handful of years it won't be on the edge of it.
That's something to address. That's something to address maybe twenty years?
You either got to get ready for it or you can't just sit and watch it.
I think, I think we're at a point where we really need a fresh, we need a fresh I think, I think we're at a point where we really need a fresh, we need a fresh look. And that's what's driving this. And not that, but I don't have, I don't hear people using this. We don't use it in our advertising. We did at one time, we haven't for years.
It's dated.
I appreciate what you're saying, Benjamin, that, I mean, I'm not saying that what you're telling us is not valid, but I do feel that we're at a point where we need to take a look at this deal.
I think we should put it to a community vote personally, let the city, the residents.
Select us the city council.
But you're expressing your personal opinion in relation to all of your constituents within the board.
Well, if you want to pull, how would that work, Teresa?
I'm just saying a poll, a vote or a poll for forty-eight hours, just put a poll out there on Facebook, a general consensus poll, come back with next council meeting in June. If the poll is in favor for rebranding, then hey, great. If the poll is not, then the citizens of Hartford have a chance to express their concerns.
Well, the reality is, it's on the council, it's on our agenda, and you're the only one here to discuss it.
I am, because a lot of people don't pay attention to them.
So we can continually jump through extra hoops, but it's not productive. That's my opinion, I haven't sat here for six years. If they feel passionately, they show up, they pay attention. Where are we gonna do that Hartford happening? You know, where do you make that poll? I appreciate your input. But, I mean, the community has voted essentially by a lot of chaos. And should they decide that we're not driving this bus in the right direction, they will fill this place.
Because they have. You notice what happened when we were talking about shutting the street down?
So I, I didn't disagree with anything that Travis just said. I, I just, I feel.
I get it.
We need to spend fifty thousand dollars a bit more wisely, or sixty thousand or twenty thousand dollars, whatever the final outcome is. We need to be a bit more cost conscious under, under the recent storm damage that we've gone through. And that's the only reason why I'm expressing my concern now is because of the recent storm.
Yeah.
You know? I mean, because we're incurring a lot of.
It's been budgeted, I mean, there's been multiple opportunities for the community to chime in.
And we understand that with the storm, we're always gonna have storms, there's always gonna be things that are gonna come up. I feel from our, back to what Travis said, the citizens elect us, put us that up here to sit at this table, not to think about what, I mean, yeah, we have to think about what's happening right today, but if we're not thinking five years ahead, we're gonna be dead. And what we're trying to do is make sure that we're moving this thing forward. We're trying to move the ball as fast, not as fast, but move the ball forward and keep us progressive. That's my opinion on this deal. And I, we budgeted the money based on that, based on that conversation. When this was on the budget, we talked about it at that time. And there was some good discussion about should we do it, should we be spending the money on this? And the consensus was, let's look at doing this and let's see what we come up with. We charged Teresa with getting us some proposals, we reviewed them, we've set up a subcommittee to start, uh, start that process. And I'm excited to see what comes out of this deal. Personally, I get it that you like this, but I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna have some exciting stuff to look at. And if we're gonna take a poll, I'd rather take a poll and give them a couple new ideas to look at. Right?
And, and I'm not opposed to that.
Right, I'm not opposed to that, I was. You.
Yeah, expressing concern under the recent developments in this last ten days of.
Yep.
You know, because the city is under a financial burden now from the storm, you know, and having to spend extra funds at the moment. Not that it can't be done next year when the city has had a chance to recruit that extra expense, you know.
I think if the city was ill-prepared and didn't have appropriate reserves, it would probably be a different discussion. But they are prepared.
Yeah.
It's not, I'm not hearing any concerns about financial recovery from our storm damage.
I don't have any big concerns, we do.
We currently have had a budget from what I.
Okay, all right.
Appreciate that.
Thank you for your.
Appreciate it.
You bet. Any further discussion or motion from the council?
I'll make a motion to go with, uh, Haken and Schultz, made a recommendation.
Hold on a second. Discussion. If not, we'll vote O'Hara.
Mattson.
Keel.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
Loslawger.
Yes.
All right, that approved. Let's jump back up to the Stockwell discussion. Uh, if you guys looked at. Okay, yeah, here, yeah, here it is. Okay, Teresa laid most of this out in her, uh, in her, uh, report. I was here for the meeting with Mitch from Stockwell. Craig, Teresa and I sat down with Mitch and discussed this. I guess the long and the short is they're asking for a, um, contract amendment to increase their amount for construction services by forty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars.
In light of what Benjamin said, I would say those funds are gonna be better served, including of the community.
So.
Not, I don't understand, they don't have any justification that I haven't been able to find in the documentation to support the request.
So in our original agreement, we, um, they had in their, um, construction administration, that's basically their time and effort of overseeing the project, the contractor makes sure everything does properly and whatnot. And that was fifty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars, quite a chunk of money. And granted, this proposal was done a couple of years ago because we had it, you know, we signed the agreement with them. We kind of shelved the project for a couple of years just because of some issues with grant funding and whatnot. Um, so, you know, costs change, costs have changed a little bit, obviously, you know, pay increases happen with paying their staff. But all in all, we, like I said, we have fifty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars that they have, said they have expensed already. And now they're asking for, you know, not quite twice as much, but another forty-eight thousand on top of it, which to me, and I think during our conversation, like we said, they kind of laid out some reasons why that happened and um, we've kind of talked a little bit afterwards about it, and I just don't know if they justify those dollars either. It, it's a large amount. The project actually, all in all, has gone pretty good. It, it's gone quicker than we thought it would, so if anything at all on the forefront, I thought it would have taken, took, taken less time out there than it has because they're going faster than what was originally thought, you know, the contractor is, so.
So, yeah.
We had legal review of the contract.
Yes.
And what did he say?
And, you know, they have in there, you know, for compensation, they do have a hourly not-to-exceed amount, but then the next paragraph right under it states that, you know, they, if they do come to that amount, they can negotiate with the city to, for an amendment, so they do have the legal right to come for this.
Or software.
Correct.
Yeah, or software, yeah, basically that's it. It's either we come to an agreement with them or they.
We're gonna pay some, maybe one way or the other.
Yeah, so.
So here's what I, one comment that I made to Mitch. They came back to us when we asked for that water line to be added. There was already one amendment to this.
Yep, and I was just saying.
To this contract that moved it to a hundred and fifty-three thousand. My, my comment to Mitch the day we sat here, I said, so you knew that you quoted this in twenty nineteen, in twenty twenty-one it's being left. If you had a question or a concern that you did not have this priced right, why did you not say it that day? And I don't see in his documentation that he gave us an answer to that question, because that's the question that I asked him.
No, and, and to me, he kind of said, well, that was an oversight on their part, right? I mean, that's how I took it.
Yeah, yeah. And really, I, I believe they knew two years from when they quoted it to now that their wages and all of their expenses had gone up. If they didn't realize that, so, I mean, yeah.
What, what does it look like to switch a project like that right now?
Well, that's a good question. David's here tonight, we have had this conversation with, with ISG, because if we say the Stockwell, my understanding, if we say we are not going to honor their request, from what I gathered, they're not, correct? They've spent every dime that they say is in the contract. So we would have to have our present city engineer do pick up that administration. I don't believe we have asked for any pricing or anything yet, we wanted to get this to site. It's two, really kind of two separate issues, but we wanted, but we do need to know that.
I think we better know what we're gonna do before we decide.
And, and ISG and Stockwell, we've had initial conversations that if this happens, would they be able to pick up and, and, you know, they, they'd be willing.
And wish it less than forty-eight thousand dollars.
Well, if, if, if what they're saying, four to six weeks of construction and two weeks for punch list items, I don't know how it's meant. That amount, so.
Because the project's one percent complete. We just approved a payroll that puts it at about.
Really, all we have left is the section of Oaks for construction. They're working right now on the temporary roll, which is pretty much complete. They've got the utilities on Oaks Avenue is what's left. They have everything all the way to Central States already in place.
Do we have any other open projects that are not with Stockwell?
This is it.
So many projects, um, they have follow-up some punch list items on some previous, like the intersection of Rudin Noble. Those are the punches that ISG can do as well. ISG can do as well, so. This is the last project they have, so this is the only open project they have, really, with it.
So they're about seventy-five percent done, if I'm doing the rough math.
Yeah, I think so.
Is that about right?
I, I, I would venture to guess that.
They're early, just, they got the last section from, uh, Oak, around the, kind of around the corner, I would call it, and the whole.
Kind of from the Vet Center, yep, to, to the building center there.
So barring special circumstances, what does it, like a high ballpark of, of giving accurate that?
So there'll be, there'll be a little bit that will, I mean, we're, we're, we're aware of the plans, you know, from that, from that aspect, because we reviewed those in advance, um, as the city engineer, just to make sure, there's a couple of things that we wanted to make sure that they were doing that, the new standards to, to meet those, so.
Yeah.
We're comfortable with those. Um, I, I, if I was giving them the ballpark, I, I don't know how we would get it done for thirty. And that's gonna be, I mean, a little bit of his learning time, because we're gonna have to, we're gonna, it's gonna be a little bit clunky because we're gonna recreate their pay requests and things like that, but.
Offer them half, otherwise move on?
I was gonna say, that's another option too, we can try to negotiate a.
Right, that's, yeah, that's why we.
We can't do it without someone.
Correct, we have to have someone watching the project.
Yeah, we definitely want an engineer overseeing it.
Yes.
And you all have, to your knowledge, have capacity to, to pass someone there?
Yeah, yep. Uh, frankly, we, the individual, we can pull from another project that is gonna work in six months. And, and that was, that was the statement that we've, we're already planning for that. So we're planning that they can start today in, in a sense, so we can allocate the individuals that we do start.
It's kind of nice with ISG because they do have another project coming, they do have personnel here, you kind of coordinate that time, whereas Stockwell is just sending someone out all the time.
I think that gives them the option if they want to finish the project.
I didn't get the feel that they were gonna move off of their figures, this or nothing. Did you?
I, he never said anything about it, and we didn't really talk about it, but like I said, you could throw it out there and that's their choice of whether they want to accept it or not.
How can you even entertain it without any documentation? He said precedent that, oh, we get close to the end of the project, but now we're a little short. We missed it.
But they're, I mean, when the billions come, they have ours documented to their project on their bills, but.
They don't have anything to support, how are we gonna get to this number?
Oh, yes, oh, the future one, yeah, no, exactly.
Forty-eight dollars.
We're throwing that out, yeah.
I mean, the project isn't.
It would be a maximum of whatever we offer.
So like I said, a fourth of it's left, but then you got almost twice as, almost twice as much, and it doesn't quite compute out.
So what I understand is even if we offer them half, ISG's saying they can still do it for the same.
Or they're.
If.
If.
Now, they would have said, we need an engineer, one, two, four, whatever, at X number of hours, if there's no justification, it's, it's really the, it's, it's a bit absurd, really, um, to make the ass, just, and they literally say we, their wording is a little bit more, um, flowing than mine, but it's like, oh, we missed it. We undershot it.
And that's why I go back. That's why I asked him that specific question. If there was ever an opportunity for them to throw off the, because had they thrown up the brakes right then, hey, I would have respected them. But they did not. And this kind of.
Twenty-five percent max. So it's not a little mess, it's not like they've had to buy materials. Labor's gone up, but it hasn't gone up twenty-five percent.
Right, no, their weight is, they're not.
I mean, the wrong line of work if it's gone up twenty-five percent.
Yeah, yeah. Well, uh, even if, even if the project had been a complete, you know, maybe disasters, not for everyone, but just, it's really flowed. We, we had one, their presence has only been here at one meeting. I haven't seen a weekly update for the entire project.
Two, um, two updates.
Total.
The whole, yeah.
They, to say they've even like cleared a low bar is really giving them the benefit of the doubt. And is there any other precedent in any other community where this has been, oh, yeah, we've had this project here and there. I, I can't even, I can't even wrap my head around how this precedent gets set.
Are they still, I mean, there's, what, what was the date they exceeded this and they're still out there?
Um, we really, so weather kind of moved in last week, so they really haven't done anything. Nobody's been working up there this past week, so they have not put in any more time or effort on this.
But we did ask the question.
Is it gonna stop?
Right, we asked the question, if we say no, what happens? And he said, we're done, right?
Yep, yep.
That's what I understood him to say, because we asked that question. Kind of to say, well, if it dries up, do we have one more day, two more, what do we have?
Yeah, no, and he said, yeah, if we decide not to.
Right.
For this, or we don't get into something negotiated, they're, they're done with the project.
There's not even a baton handoff, it's just they walk away.
When was that, first amendment?
Uh, the first, um, hold on.
That would have been last year.
First amendment was.
Yeah, it would have been last.
Because I was gonna be talking about the twelve students.
Yep, yep. So basically, this was just a sewer project to start, but we decided to add a little section of water in Twelve Street since they've been working out there anyway, it makes sense to add it to the project. So that was that first amendment was to have that water.
So that kind of shoots down the whole hourly rate increase right now, right?
Actually, they definitely knew their rates at that time.
And if you have to redo it twice?
Well, again, they had a perfect opportunity before we, before we left the project. If you were uncomfortable with your numbers.
Yeah.
That's the time.
I mean, I, I might understand everybody, even one time, okay.
Right.
I get it.
And he said it was time to, to not to exceed.
Um, on the main portion of the bid, yeah. The construction management is, if they go, what I understand is that they go over, then they, they have to advise us right away that they're gonna go over, that there's gonna be an over, right? That's how I understand it.
Exactly, yep.
If it appears any time compensation for services rendered will exceed the maximum amount, Stockwell will notify client in writing. Stockwell will not perform services or be entitled to additional compensation in excess of the maximum until Stockwell client have agreed upon additional compensation for services to be rendered.
Yeah.
It's an interesting contract.
Yeah, it's unfortunate.
Well, that came from the guy that sat at the end of the table. He always wanted those not-to-exceed contracts.
That, that's, and, and, and that, that's, that's, that's the thing, the not-to-exceeds, because, I mean, he wanted that and, and we, and we gave you the not-to-exceed, but honestly, a lot of construction services will be timing materials, mainly because there is volatility, and that's what I would always say, there's volatility in the contractor that you're gonna get allocated, right?
Yeah.
And it, and it is hard bid scenario, so, but when you get a timing materials not-to-exceed, I would sit there and say that if it's a not-to-exceed number, you would have to have some, some circumstances in regards to change the scope, to change the timeline, or something that you're not taking into account in the original estimate, that would. that would incur that modification.
Yep, circumstances in your control or one, I guess.
Yeah, and, and that's why I would, I would, I don't like me either. I don't like not-to-exceed either because I honestly think that a lot of times if we get a good contractor, we become significantly younger, you know? And that's great.
Great for the company.
For us, yeah, for your budget.
Great for our budget, hard for yours. Potentially, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Because you have this project, so this budget, this budget to that.
But they would, they should be under two.
Right.
But we'd be under as well, yeah.
Right, but if, if you have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in your budget for this project and it goes really, really well and it comes at eighty or ninety or even a hundred and twenty, you know, if I'm looking at, because I do not to exceed as well.
But that's just.
If I'm forecasting income.
Agreed. But if I, of the, how busy we are, it's great because we'll put them on.
Move on to the next thing.
Exactly, yeah.
Hundred percent.
So, and that's where I would sit there and say, that that's the confusing thing is that one that says not to exceed in the modification without documenting a change in scope or a change in, in schedule. And I, I, I think they're trying to justify a change in schedule.
Thoughts, further discussion, actions? Have they submitted any invoicing? We haven't approved any. No, this is, this was a long song.
There was a bill in this bill run for work through April eighth. And that, on this, they always give a summary of what's billed to date, paid to date, and balance due.
Right, we don't have, we don't have that in our packet.
Uh, it's in the bill.
It's in the bill, well, you don't get a.
But it's just a long song.
Yeah, so you.
Yeah, it doesn't give us that break down.
Doesn't give us that break down.
Like hourly rates and.
Um, well, they, like Teresa said, they break out their services, you know, and hourly rate, like, an engineer one or an engineer two, their hours times their rate. We're not sure who's who, that was another thing that came in our discussions, um.
Yeah.
The one engineer, and I don't even know if he's a full engineer, that's always out there is this Tyler, and said, "I, I don't even think he's a full-fledged engineer." We couldn't get from Mitch, what is his hourly rate? And he wouldn't tell us. And that's the one that probably is out there the most.
Done the majority.
Yep, does the majority.
Thank you. What did they give you for, uh, this is their first pay request?
No. Um, I know we've had, I think we probably had two more that I think I've submitted for.
Oh, prior, paid to date, yeah, thirty-seven. Bill of the day, balance. What's that saving balance is? Forty-four thousand one twenty-two. So if, if you're billing.
That's thirty days.
If you're billing not to exceed, and you're billing them as your incurred, incurred, incurred in expenses, they still have forty-four thousand dollars left in the bill. Plus an additional forty-eight thousand dollars just to get down Oaks. And that's the way I would, that's, that's the way I would look at this.
So what is the date on that track?
April twenty-second.
So it's four.
Well, three weeks old.
You're already a month in, so there's another month extended.
Yeah, it's very, only true April.
But there's been how much work that's been done in the last month? Forty-four thousand dollars.
I, I would say, I don't think forty-four thousand, because like this last week, they haven't been out there at all, so maybe you got a couple weeks of work there? And we had some rain dates in there, so.
Hills excavators have sat at the end of Oaks, worked quite a lot.
Yeah, it's, I don't think there's been a whole lot this past month.
So if they have the same hours in the next period, that's another eleven.
Yeah.
That takes you over, right? So unless we are gonna say those hours are wrong. But that was rate right, we've already, we'll have another one coming through May eighth, that's probably about the same, I assume.
I would guess.
So the duration of the project, the contract with SiteWorks was for how many months, how many weeks, so what was the duration of that project?
Oh, wasn't it to the end of July, something like that?
Right.
I have that in my mind, four, I think, July something was there now? Yeah. Here they've exceeded it, here they've, they've exceeded your main.
The numbers just don't work for me. I don't know.
That's me and Craig are thinking, it just, the numbers don't seem to work for us either. If you go look, say they're paying this Tyler two hundred dollars an hour, and that's on the high site for it. Say he's out there sixty hours.
Well, that's a big charge, you ask, that's not what they're paying him.
No, right, but they're.
No, but even if you go by their, their rates of them.
One or.
Even if he's putting fifty hours in a week, which he isn't, it, it doesn't come close to that number.
Well, I would say if we've, uh, if we boiled it down, and I don't know, I agree with the precedent, if we go back and try to negotiate, what does that do for us? Or do we just bring this to a, bring this to a stop and say, "Well, we're gonna move forward with our, uh, present city engineer." That's really the two. I mean, I don't, I don't know. I've had that discussion taken place when he was here about, "Well, maybe there's some negotiation room," but that never even, that didn't even come up. I mean, there was no, I got the feeling that this was it. Right? Did I misread that? But that's true what I thought.
We, we never talked about, I mean, the contract, the original says you can negotiate it, but, yeah, we never discussed that at our meeting with Art and Craig.
Right, right, right.
I just don't wanna switch without trying to at least negotiate it down and end up costing more.
Right.
True, you wanted to ask the question.
Yeah, and offer them a third? I don't know. Maybe then they'll come back with a half or something.
And there.
They won't move then.
And I'm sure there will be some cost involved with switching over all the plans and the pay requests, I mean, there's gonna be some kind of logistics there that we, is gonna incur some kind of costs, so. Just to get everything switched from Stockwell's to ISG. Hopefully it won't be a large amount, but it will.
Well, if that's, if that's what we're gonna do, if we're gonna make an offer, I need, I will need that as a motion from the council to, to direct Teresa that we do that.
I mean, I, I think it's appropriate to ask the questions and just say, "You're charging us this many hours for an engineer who is not there fifty hours a week? And we're just not gonna pay it."
We need to ask a point.
And, and I don't know. It's a third or a half or what is the judgment?
Should we just cover, just ask the question?
Yeah.
Rather than make it into a motion?
Because the motion, in my opinion, would come after that conversation. They either agreed or didn't agree. And so it's either X, which is what's agreed upon amount, or it's Y, which is what they're currently proposing.
So here's the only problem with that. Since they're telling us that they're out of money, if, if the weather clears up and they're able to roll, what happens then? Do we tell our contractor that they can't roll because we don't have an engineer?
ISG said they can start tomorrow.
I understand that, but do you tell we get this one straightened up? I don't wanna have two contracts going on this, we don't have to.
We don't want.
See what I mean? I'm not trying to be devil's advocate.
I'm kinda gonna cut bait and fish.
Well, I'm just.
Yeah, I think you do because otherwise we don't have another meeting to.
Tell them two and six.
I really hate to hold up this project till.
I, I think you should tell them that concern and I think, I don't know, if it's a third or a half or whatever we wanna offer, or not even along, if they don't take it.
So our, our motion, our motion would have to be forwarded such that the director to have this negotiation with Stockwell, and then in the event that does go well, then she says it, or you know, give ISG the green light to take their reins.
Are we comfortable with that? Because really, what's gonna happen? It dries up, they're gonna wanna roll. We need to make sure we know what we're gonna do. I don't wanna see the, the excavator sat there.
They'll get the oil open.
At home someplace else.
Contractor will want this other project and then it'll be months before they get it back.
Yeah, we wanna get it done.
I would, um, make a motion to approve, uh, negotiation of discussion with Stockwell on the sewer project extent, sewer extension project to negotiate one half of the requested payment as payment in full. Sorry, do I need to finish that? Is it two motions?
We, we have to. We split it into two motions or did?
I think it works. You know, yeah, yeah.
I can add an and if you've got all that.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and, uh, if it fails, move forward with converting the project over to ISG management.
You still want a second, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Who was the second?
Travis. So let's read that back so we know what we're going on here. We're authorizing Teresa to negotiate with Stockwell for no more than half of the, uh, proposed amount. And if that is not accepted, that we move forward with ISG as engineer to finish the project. Correct? Am I all right?
Mm-hmm.
That kind of what everybody here?
And, and you guys can do that quickly.
I just don't wanna.
So they don't load up the excavators and.